Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna share that for a couple of seconds and then we'll go ahead and start recording.
This conference will now be
Okay, Mayor.
All right, ready?
Yes.
Okay, well, welcome everyone on our computer screens. I think we're kind of getting maybe a little bit more used to the logistics to this. But welcome, so I'll call the meeting to order. And Jorge is going to put up a flag on our screen and we'll take like a 15 second time of silence and everybody can recite the Pledge of Allegiance to themselves. All right, thank you Jorge. Could we get a roll call, please?
Sykes.
Yes.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Canopa.
Here. All right, thank you. Okay, well, we're not in the county chambers, but we still have some very important proclamations that are kind of our annual ones that we do, so we've got all three of them tonight, so bear with me folks and we'll get the proclamations ready. And this one is for Arbor Day, April 24th, 2020. Whereas in 1872 Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas Albany's urban trees grace our city streets, parks and open spaces, provide shade and habitat for wildlife, improve air and water quality, increase property values and economic vitality in business areas, and contribute to a sense of community pride and ownership. And whereas through the cooperation of all residents of Albany, the beneficial effects of tree plantings in our community and in our surrounding forest lands can be passed on as a vital natural resource to succeeding generations. And whereas the City of Albany has been named as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 25 consecutive years in recognition of our stewardship of Albany's urban forest. Now therefore I Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day. In Albany, encourage all citizens to take time to appreciate and enhance our community's urban forest and to participate in activities celebrating our community's commitment to trees. I witness, I hear whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed as 22nd day of April 2020. And we normally have activities that would probably would be coming this weekend at Farmer's Market, but all of that needed to be canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But I do want to recognize staff that had in our Parks Department that were working on all planning for that event and then they had to change those plans. Part of that was our procession of species parade. And I do hope next year we're able to start that back up for the youth in our community and and folks that love to come out for that parade. Okay, next is Mental Health Month, May 2020, 2020. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there's a strong body of research that supports user-friendly principles that all people can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives. Each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, veterans group, and community members have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas the Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board is emphasizing that there is no health without mental health by being involved with public service announcements, health fairs, public speakers and various trainings regarding mental health issues. Now, I Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Month in Albany, Oregon, and I also call upon residents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Albany to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our residents can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed as 22nd day of April 2020. So, all right, and our last one. And this is one quite fitting considering what all we're going through with the COVID-19 pandemic is Global Love Day. May 1st, 2020, whereas the Love Foundation Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, has announced Global Love Day to facilitate establishing love and peace on our planet. And whereas Global Love Day will establish a worldwide focus toward unconditionally loving each other as we love ourselves. And whereas we are one humanity on this planet, all life is interconnected and interdependent. All share in the universal bond of love. Love begins with self-acceptance and forgiveness, with respect and compassion. We embrace diversity and together we make a difference through love. And whereas the Love Foundation Incorporated invites mankind to declare May 1st, 2020 as Global Love Day, a day of forgiveness and unconditional love. Global Love Day will act as a model for all of us to follow each day and every day. Now therefore I Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2020 as Global Love Day. And Albany, Oregon, invite all residents to observe this day which honors the public cause for global love, world peace and universal joy. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed as 22nd day of April 2020. And as that, it's a, how Global Love Day kind of transpired as transition sort of from when I was a kid, everything day first mayday where you put flowers on your neighborhood door, so maybe we'll get more neighborhoods starting that old tradition up this year, so as it's well needed. But, okay, that's it for our proclamations. And ban business from the public, that was supposed to be as it's stated on our agenda. They were to be emailed at 5:00 PM of the day of the meeting and Marilyn, you said there was, correct?
I muted myself, sorry. There is, there is one letter for each public hearing.
For each public hearing, but not
Yeah, but not for business from the public, no.
Right, gotcha, okay, thank you. All right, now our public hearings and that here. Okay, now bear with me folks, because I got another, got a script here to read. And there is, in case somebody is online or listening, if there was to be comments for a public hearing, that was supposed to have been submitted at 5:00 PM today. And also if somebody wanted to speak on one of those public hearings, that also needed to be submitted, so I will call the people who had signed up when we get to those public hearings. Okay, so first one. And on tonight's agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding a zoning amendment from Residential Medium Density RM, Residential Medium Density Attached, RMA. On the property located at 2710 Grand Prairie Road as described in EZ 0619. I call to order this quasi judicial public hearing at 7:25 PM. If you wish to testify, there are two options available, will be described on the council agenda. Do any members, council members wish to declare a complaint? Do any members wish to report any evidence? The only thing, I driven by this location many times and probably a lot of you have too, since it's right on a major collector road. So, and do any members wish to report a site visit? Besides what I just mentioned. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? If so, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called on. All right, not seen anyone. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards. Staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I'll call for the staff report from Planner Travis Nord. Travis?
Travis, you're still muted.
Sorry, thank you. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So as Mayor Canopa said, it's a request for a zoning map amendment, ZCO 619. Located at 2710 Grand Prairie. Process is a quasi judicial map amendment type four process. Decision-making criteria can be found in ADC 2.740. Provided agency notice, provided public notice originally for the Planning Commission hearing on March 16th. And then again, when we switched to digital, we resent the notice and reposted the property. Planning Commission recommendation was for approval again on March 12th, or March 16th, 2020. And here we are tonight. Zoning map amendments have to meet statewide planning goals. The two most relevant goals are land use planning goal two, housing goal 10. Land use planning process frameworks, those are the basis for that. We'll get into those criteria later. Housing, provide for housing needs of citizens, create diverse neighborhoods in a variety of housing choices. All right, I'm gonna try to my screen here. Summary of the property, as you say, I'm sure you're all well familiar with it. It's at the corner of Grand Prairie Road, Waverly. It's a 1.3 acre property. The request is to go from residential medium to residential medium attached. The comprehensive plan designation is medium density. That is residential medium in the requested RMA zone. Surrounding land uses, you have a church to the east and to the south. Grand Prairie Park over to the west. And to the north, you have a mix of single family. Key differences between the two zones, RM allows max of 25 units per acre. RMA allows a max of 35 units per acre. RM detached units are permitted, RMA really attached, really attached. One big difference, self-serve storage units are permitted in the RM where they're not permitted in the RMA. And maximum allowable building height is 45 feet in the RM, 60 feet in the RMA. Density standards, there's actually two standards. One is by the unit count, one is by the max that we just discussed. By the unit count, it's for RM, 28 one-bedroom units would be allowed maximum on that property. 37 one-bedroom units. 23 two-three bedroom units for the RM zone, RMA 31 two-to-three bedroom units. The gross max is 32 units for the RM zone and 45 units for the RMA. So, you get up to that, they would have to utilize some density bonuses. The conclusion was the proposed amendment remains consistent with the city's comprehensive plan goals and policies. The proposed amendment does not affect implementation of the statewide planning goals. Therefore, staff zoning map, as did the Planning Commission. Wherever we need to take it from here.
Okay, were you, was that it Travis?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that's
Okay. Do you have clarifying questions regarding the staff report?
So
Yeah, Alex, I can only I can only see now a few, a couple of you, okay, there you go. Okay.
So the proposals will go from RM to RMA, that's, that's what I understood it, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, that's all you need to know.
Okay, all right, Mike?
Um, question for Travis, in the comment from the public, they said that we didn't meet goal 10. Are you confident that if they take that to wherever that we can meet that, beat that?
Yeah, so the, the comment from the public, and we had talked to them kind of throughout the process there, they usually comment on most of these, I believe. I, I don't think it was, we were trying to decipher what they were actually trying to say as, at staff. I don't think it was that we didn't meet goal 10. I believe it's that we provided findings that meet goal 10, but they weren't under the goal 10 section, so that all that housing stuff that came before that. They, I think, they just said it should have been in, under the goal 10 section in the staff report. And the reason when I talked to one of the staff members that they said they provided that comment was they feel sometimes people just do a Ctrl F on the staff report and do goal 10. And so they just look at the goal 10 findings. And then when they didn't see the housing stuff under that, they got a little, you know, maybe it wasn't included. It's included, it's just not included under the goal 10. I think. But yeah, I think I would be confident and David can weigh in if he would meet the goal 10 requirements.
I agree as well. Yeah, and in fact, what we can do if we need to is we can always modify the staff report to simply add a new finding that just refers to that section, the quantitative analysis. Earlier in the staff report, we could just have a finding that that get adopted by reference under the goal 10 section of the analysis. If council wishes.
I just want to make sure that if we start to get in a, in a, in a fight that the letter, the letter that they wrote was confusing to me at best. So, I just wanted to know if you guys on staff were confident enough that if we get dragged into court, that we can defend ourselves.
Absolutely, I don't think that this is a challenger, any kind of a legal ramification here. They also would submit letters of comment to ensure that they have scanning and that they receive a copy of the decision. The analysis that was done in this has been done for the past several zone changes like this. And we have, like Travis mentioned, we have gotten letters from this organization before. Their main interest is to make sure that we're providing enough affordable housing. And frankly, the change from RM to RMA is probably the best way to do that, it's our highest potential presidential zone.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Bessie?
Yes, I was just wondering, in the report it says that there's easement from the church property. And I just want to make sure that that's a irrevocable easement, that it's not going to be any problems in the future, say a change. Usually there isn't a change of ownership with, you know, a large church like that, but since they have to go out that way, one of the ways, is that a guaranteed, like forever?
So as far as I know, it is, I don't think they'd be moving forward if it wasn't, but if Matthew Rutgers is on, maybe he could provide some insight, because he's, he's kind of our guy that
Well, the applicant is also present, I believe, and he could also address that.
I think, I see Matthews on, Matthew?
I, I am, I actually, I don't have a copy of the easement, I would probably defer to the applicant to to better respond to that, I certainly can get that information if need be, but I can look at it kind of in the background here.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Because actually, it's with only one out, it's going to be pretty limited of what they could actually, the amount of density then, wouldn't it?
Well, there are two, two exits.
But the one is going to be temporary, from what I'm understanding, for construction, or is that so, Mr. Cedars, you're the applicant?
Correct, yes.
Uh huh, and is that access off of Waverly, just a temporary one?
No, both of those easements on the church property are permanent easements. They're granted, I, I'd have to look back at the easement document, but there was nothing of a temporary nature assigned to those, the property, and you can see on the, in the just even from the aerial view, that there are permanent paved access points that have been developed on the church property going to this property, so those, those are certainly, we've, we've certainly double-checked that those easements were valid and that they weren't going to be, you know, taken away, you know, they're definitely associated with the property as a development right. And the property, the church property, when it was developed, was set up with the intent that that property could be developed and to move the access away from the intersection using those.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
So, Mr. Cedars, so can you also, for the record, so that it picks it up, that stating your name and your address and that, make sure you state that you are the applicant of this?
Yes, absolutely, my name is Peter Cedars, last name is S-E-A-D-E-R-S. And I am representing the owner, I am the applicant on the, on the project. I am the project engineer with MSS Engineering. And we're located at 215 Northwest 4th Street in Corvallis.
Okay, all right, you. Okay, does any councils have any other clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Actually, that part should have been our question, Mr. Cedars is, should public testimony, so we're kind of going a little bit off course there. So, okay.
I've got several questions I'd like to ask.
Okay, yep, yes, Dec, go ahead.
Can the staff tell me how many neighbors were within 300 feet of this project? Then how many letters were sent out? I'm surprised we didn't get any response from neighbors.
So, I can tell you, but just because of I don't have access to my files right now, we could look that up and see how many went out. I don't know if any of the other staff have access to the, to the files, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
So the distance that the notices
So I would guess maybe, I would guess maybe four or five, looking at the, at the map.
My belief is it's more than that, I, I think it's to that, captured that stuff to the north, captured quite a few of them. From what I can remember, it was in the twenties.
Yeah, I think it was about 17, because we just had to renotice this hearing, since it's a virtual meeting. And we worked together to put that mailing list out, so my best recollection is there were 17 that went out.
Okay.
And some of it would have been the properties to the south, do you recall?
Sure, so that 300-foot distance is measured from the perimeter of the property lines in all directions.
So it's property line to property line, okay. Well, that would make sense. And this is low-cost housing, I'm, I understand. And I'm wondering, are these people going to be driving automobiles, cars? And can you tell me or show me what your parking situation is going to be?
So there's, there's no formal development proposal with this request. It's, it's just
No development at all, okay. Yeah, okay.
Right, this goes back to where we, always in the past with the zone change, we had them coincide with the application and those were changes made a few years ago and so it kind of prevents us from being able to ask questions on anything that would be pertaining to a site plan.
I think that's very unfortunate, because there's no room to park on the street. And the neighbors across the street, those are cul-de-sacs. And I doubt very much that they would appreciate people driving around into their cul-de-sacs to park. So it would be interesting to know what's planned for this for this apartment house, I would guess it's going to be an apartment house. Am I correct, Mr. Cedars, you plan to build an apartment house there?
It will definitely be single-family development, we don't have an exact layout of the property worked out yet, we've you know, we've put some conceptual ideas together. There, you know, the initial analysis that we've done on this, there's definitely enough room to provide parking on the site with and meet the density requirements of the zone. And so, you know, we're not, certainly the, the, the church next door. You know, we had approached them about perhaps some shared parking arrangements, they were not interested in that based on our initial approach, so and certain, and the, you know, the roads that front the property don't have any parking on them, so certainly making sure that we were able to do that was something we looked at carefully. So I'm confident that we will be able to provide adequate parking for for the development within the zone standards.
Even though you're going to be MDA, which allows oh, what does that allow, there are 40-some apartments?
Yeah, it actually makes it a little bit, oh, pardon me, I didn't mean to cut you off, sir.
Okay, and most people, I assume if it's lower-cost housing, it's probably going to be younger, perhaps married couples living there. And most of the young married couples I know, they both have to work to pay off school costs. All the various things that they have to try and catch up on. I, I don't see room there on that 1.3 acres for oh, 50, 60, maybe 90 cars, I, I, I just don't quite see it. I, I'd, I'd, I'd have to guess on this, I'd have to see some sort of plan.
Okay, so, so council, so now or normal, we already had Mr. Cedars kind of introduce themselves, but I didn't give you an opportunity to speak. Mr. Cedars, is there anything else you wanted to say about your application?
No, I certainly hear Councilor Olson's concerns. Like I said, we, we have put together Um, like I said, we, we have put together several conceptual ideas, but the, the developer didn't want to put too much, um, we're confident that we can provide the, the unit density as well as the parking. And obviously, you know, that'll be reviewed by staff at the time that we submit for permits. Um, the owner didn't want to invest any more time and money into putting a, a site plan together, uh, until we were sure that we could go, you know, that we could do the RMA zoning, because obviously that would affect the site plan. Um, and actually, the, um, the RMA zoning technically will make it a little bit easier for us to, to provide the necessary parking, um, just because, uh, you're allowed a little bit, um, you're allowed a little higher, um, building envelope. So we can, we, it gives us actually a little bit more room to be able to, uh, incorporate the parking onto the site.
Okay, any other, any council, do you have any questions of Mr. Cedars? Okay, all right.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Are, are we going to assume at all that, that, uh, these affordable housing units, that maybe people won't need cars, or maybe not be able to afford cars? And if so, uh, you say that, uh, uh, things like food and so forth are available. And I'm wondering, how, do we know how far it is from this location to the nearest grocery store? There may be some fast food joints within walking distance, but I wonder if, uh, how far is it to the nearest grocery store?
I think Fred Meyer's about.
Maybe staff can.
Uh, yes.
One point, how many miles?
There's, uh, the Heritage Mall is, uh, within a mile of the site. And, um, the site is also served by public transit.
How often does the public transit run?
I think we're getting way off topic of this, Your Honor.
Uh, my, my point is, I think this is a poor place for, uh, low-cost housing. High-density low-cost housing.
I would, uh, can I just make one, uh, one comment there? Uh, and that would be, uh, I just want to clarify that there's, there's no proposal that this is necessarily going to be low-cost housing at this point. It is, um, it will be RMA, you know, compliant housing.
Yeah, I should have said affordable housing.
Well, it's, but it's not technically, I mean, there, I know, I don't remember, I'm not a affordable housing expert by any means, but it's, it's not necessarily affordable, low-cost. It, it'll be, um, that, that decision of what, like, what level of housing it's going to be hasn't really been made yet. Um, but I actually, I would anticipate that these will be nice, um, attractive units.
Right, so I'm, yeah, the question to council is going to be.
Has this developer built anything of this sort in Corvallis?
I, I don't think we can ask that then, Dick. Um, this is what Mr. Cedars, I guess, in, in the years past, we used to have a site plan with our zone change. So Counselor Olson's been around a long time where he remembers that, and I do too. So that's why it's a, you know, a little bit, um, we have to kind of change our questions and what we used to be able to ask, um, when it comes to, um, just a zone change only. So, um, I apologize, it's on our end as decision makers, it can be a little frustrating because we want to ask those questions, but that's not what pertains to this application. So, um, okay, so any other questions, council? All right, um. Oh, Rich, you have one? Yes, I didn't see you there, Rich.
Well, I was just going to point out that, um, the parking situation would be handled rightfully when we put this together. I mean, yes, there is not, um, the people to the north have a wall. I mean, people are not going to be able to go over there and park in their, in their area. The people to the northwest, um, it's a park. The, the people directly to west is a park, because there's no place to park. The people directly south, there's no, no way to get in there. So, um, what you would end up with is, they would then have to, whatever program they put in, they would have to change where people are. So it's not a problem.
Okay, so Rich, I don't know if your microphone's different, but I kind of was only picking up about every other word. Was anybody else?
I couldn't hear what Rich had to say.
Yeah, so, uh, make sure maybe when you speak next, that, get towards the microphone part. Okay, all right.
If I only knew where it was.
That's better.
In someplace in front of me. I can see where the camera is, but no.
All right, um, but nobody had submitted, um, there was a letter that all of you received that was submitted for testimony. Um, and then, but there hadn't been anybody that had, um, written to sign up. So, but is there anyone else who would like to speak, um, that is watching? If so, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon and unmuted. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so that, so that I can call on you to speak.
Uh, Mayor, the applicant has questions, a comment.
Okay, but was there anyone else that wanted to speak, I mean, for public testimony? Okay, all right, I'm presuming none. Okay, um, and, okay, so, and does the applicant have anything else that would like to state? Any rebuttal testimony or anything else?
Um, I have a, uh, just a short presentation, um, that I, uh, had prepared, which, if it's okay, I would, it might be helpful to the councilors, um, just in terms of, uh, I, I shared this at the, um, uh, oh, good grief, my, uh, the Planning Commission hearing. Um, but since I don't, I'm assuming that the councilors haven't had a chance to see that, and it would take me just a, a few minutes to go through if that's appropriate.
Nope, that's fine. Proceed.
Okay, is, uh, yeah, you can, perfect, I'll go like this. Jump here. Okay, so can you all see my screen, okay?
Yes.
All right, so this is just kind of a quick, uh, uh, just a quick summary of, um, what I'm sure you're all familiar with. But I wanted to go through how I believe we comply with the five different criteria that are applicable to the zone change. Um, so, uh, I'll just take a couple of minutes to go through these quickly. Um, as you all know, the, you know, the first criteria really is about around the comprehensive plan compatibility. Um, and the, the comprehensive plan calls this area out. If you can see here, kind of in dark green, is all, is all, um, medium-density residential. So, uh, currently, as you know, it's zoned RM, and the RMA also fits within that designation. Um, the, the second criteria really being adequate transportation facilities. And Counselor Olson, you know, was certainly, um, wise in asking about this. Um, well, I guess it was, this is, there's another section that I'll, I'll talk about a little bit more about that. But, um, certainly, the, uh, the, the roads that front this, Waverly and Grand Prairie, both have adequate capacity now and into the future. And, um, so it's, it's an appropriate location for an RMA property in that it, uh, it fronts on the, on, um, arterial and collector streets. Um, adequate services, uh, in terms of public services. Uh, there is adequate water sewer and storm that are located on all sides of this property. So, uh, there's no, um, the, the services are quite large in terms of the water and sewer storm services. So there's no lack of being able to provide utility, uh, connections to this property. Um, and, uh, as I pointed out here, there's, um, transportation on both, uh, on both frontages. Um, criteria four is satisfy the goals of the comprehensive plan, um, providing access to employment and public services. So, uh, as Counselor Olson was asking about in particular, uh, you know, if this little rectangle right in here, which we have March as the property location, we have a park immediately across the street. Uh, the high school is, um, just a short distance to the south. Uh, Heritage Mall is, um, a short distance to the north. I don't have the exact measurement there, but it, um, and then there's certainly other, uh, employment and, uh, shopping facilities that are nearby there. And also, as was pointed out in the, um, uh, you know, there is a need for additional, uh, RMA property. And so this is one of the, just a very few number of properties that is, um, has been up to this point, uh, transitioned into RMA zone in order to help satisfy the overall shortage of RMA property that, um, that needs to be supplied over the next, uh, next several years. And, um, really, there's, criteria five, which is that it follows the land use and transportation plans, is, um, is not terribly applicable in that, you know, we're not modifying any transportation routes with this property. It's already situated in a, in a development, uh, pattern here that's well-established. But, um, to the point of the easements, which came up a little bit earlier, uh, you can see there are these existing access points on the east and on the south, which, um, were set up there for the, for, right now, the current driveway, uh, exits to the north. And so that really puts the, the existing driveway closer to this intersection than would be warranted for, um, for, uh, you know, a dense prop, a densely developed property. But, uh, we have accesses, you know, that are approved that allow us to move that, um, that impact away from the intersection so that it'll be, uh, a real safe, um, transportation flow in and out of these properties. Um, so all of that is just to summarize, to say that I believe that we have met the five criteria that are outlined in the code for, um, for a zone change application. And, you know, this property, as I mentioned, does satisfy, help to satisfy some of the, the need for additional RMA-zoned units. And, um, so, um, we want to concur with the staff report and ask you to approve the project. So, if there are any other questions on that, I'd be happy to, happy to try to answer those.
Any question? Council? Whoops, um, oh, okay.
I have no question.
Okay, all right, now I got everybody back on the screen. Okay, and does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented? Travis or Dick? Nope, okay.
Sharon, this is Jeff, can I just add a quick comment?
Pardon me, who was it?
This is Jeff Boyne.
Oh, hello, Jeff.
Hi, and just wanted to, um, make clear what I thought Counselor Cullum's point was, because I think it was important, and that is, no matter what the zone is, when they submit their application, they're going to have to meet the parking standards in our code. So if their site was to not have enough space to facilitate parking for the number of units they wanted, they wouldn't be able to get the number of units that they wanted. They would have to scale that back in order to make it all fit. The other thing that I would, uh, remind you is that when you are considering a zone change, whether you have a concurrent application or you don't have a concurrent application, you always want to make your decision based on all of the potential, uh, uses that might be allowed within the zones, uh, that you're, that you're, the zone that you're considering. Because, yeah, whether you have a concurrent application or not, you have no guarantee of what will ultimately be developed on that site, uh, and, until it's built. And so you want to make sure you're comfortable with, uh, what might be built, uh, under the proposed condition, regardless of, again, whether there's a concurrent application or not. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to ask, how, how can we find that out without asking what the mayor says are inappropriate questions?
No, no, I'm not saying it's inappropriate. I'm just saying that we're kind of prevented from asking those questions now, which is unfortunate. But Jeff, I'm glad you pointed that out, really base our decision on, is this, looking at it as the highest amount, highest density that, um, they would be allowed to build if that don't, if, if we should approve that zone change or not. So Dick, your concerns are very valid. Um, we just have to look at the highest amount of usage. So Jeff, I'm glad you clarified, um, that piece on it.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I may still ask, um, illegal questions, but then maybe they're not inappropriate. Illegal, I guess, in their definition.
I, I want you, Dick, I mean, we remember the old days when we used to be able to ask on these. Yeah, okay, um.
How unfortunate, that may be a term.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Um, does anyone have any procedural questions that they would like to raise at this time? If so, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so that I can call on you to speak. All right, I don't see anyone. Okay, with that, then I will close the public hearing at 8:02 PM. And council, do you have questions of staff? Or would you, um, like to have an ordinance read? What would you like to do?
I'd say read the ordinance.
My second.
Okay, all right, so Sean? Are you, are you, do the first reading, please?
Yep, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at 2710 Grand Prairie Road Southeast, Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11S-03W-17D, tax lot 101.
I would move to adopt your ordinance.
Second.
Wait, what? I'm sorry, I heard Bessie say adopt the ordinance, we have to read it a second time first.
I'm sorry, I moved to read the, the ordinance a second time, title only. Sorry, I'm not in my seat, so I can't.
Was there a second to that?
Yeah. Rich.
Okay, and for this is the, for the first reading, to have it read a second time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Oh, was that a no, Rick, Dick, for the second reading?
I said no on the second reading.
Okay, no for the, no for a second reading, okay? So that's a five one, and that means that the next meeting will be a second reading over this, um, land use application on that. Okay, all right. And, uh, Mr. Cedars, that would be at our next, uh, meeting, um, in May, would be for the second reading and a vote on that. Okay. Okay.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, all right, folks, that's, hang on here, make sure I've got everything. Um, all right, next we have for our public hearing is the CDBG block grant. And I will open that public hearing at 8:04 PM. And this would be, so I'll call the meeting, um, public meeting open at 8:05 PM. And if you wish to testify, there were two options available, which we described on the council agenda. Um, let's see, I will now ask Marilyn Smith to read the written testimony aloud. And I don't, and there was, I didn't have any testimony.
Okay, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, this is a letter from Representative Alyssa Kenny Dyer, House District 46. Dear local, dear local government leaders, you are one of 17. you are one of seventeen local governments, three counties and fourteen cities, which as entitlement jurisdictions receive annual allocations of community development block grant funds from HUD. As you know, Congress, in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic and the economic hardships resulting from the steps taken to minimize the spread of the virus, included significant new extra allocations of CDBG funds in its third stimulus bill, the CARES Act. Five billion dollars divided into three pots. The first pot totaling two billion includes approximately twenty-one million in new or extra CDBG funds for Oregon, with about thirteen million divided among the entitlement jurisdictions using the standard HUD formula, and eight million to Business Oregon to allocate to cities and counties for the balance of the state. The CARES Act requires that this first allocation be distributed by April twenty-sixth. A group of advocates for housing in Oregon, including advocates for affordable housing, tenants, landlords, public housing authorities and community action agencies, led by State Representative Alyssa Kenny Guyer, has been working to outline how a rent assistance program could work to help tenants who, because of the pandemic, have lost their incomes and can't pay their rents, and to help landlords who rely on those rent payments, and to provide housing. We expect May rents to be the cliff, as a large number of Oregonians have recently filed for unemployment insurance benefits, and anecdotal information indicates that many others don't qualify for unemployment. While the federal government's program to support local businesses, the Paycheck Protection Program, has exhausted its funding. At this point, there is no state allocation of funds targeted just for rent assistance, nor is there any targeted rent assistance in the CARES Act, and apparently also not in the current version of a fourth federal stimulus bill. But it is clear that CDBG funds can be, and previously have been, used for rent assistance. HUD has, for example, announced that the usual cap on the percentage of your CDBG allocation eligible for public services will be waived for the CARES Act funds. There are clear parameters under current HUD regulations for using CDBG funds for rent assistance, such as a requirement that any rent assistance payment go directly to the landlord. And recently, on a national conference call, Mike Wallace, Legislative Director for Housing and Community Development of the National League of Cities, said that NLOC is encouraging cities to use these critical resources for rental assistance. See the April fifteen joint statement of the National League of Cities with two national affordable housing homeless groups, homelessness groups. And she cites a, and a website. The, it's in the record in this rec, in this letter. Mr. Wallace noted even, that even under pre-COVID law, rental assistance for up to three months is an eligible use of CDBG funds, paid directly to landlords. We know that the uses of these CDBG funds are entirely within your discretion and that you have great needs during this difficult time. We certainly are not trying to tell you how to use them, but we believe you are well aware of the huge and pressing need for rent assistance in every community in Oregon, both prior to the coronavirus appearing in Oregon and now the increased need as thousands of workers lose their jobs in order to protect public health. While the Governor's Executive Order twenty thirteen prevents landlords from evicting tenants for non-payment during the pandemic, those unpaid rents are still owed, and evictions for non-payments are just being postponed. We don't want to end the eviction moratorium only to see a large number of evictions for non-payment of that deferred rent. We know, as you surely do, that many of the people who have lost their work income during this period will be unable to pay this accrued rent without assistance, even after they, we all hope, are able to return to work. We also know that many of our landlords are hurting financially during this pandemic as they struggle with employment loss themselves and have difficulty paying their mortgages and operating expenses. CDBG is the most likely source of funding to meet these pressing needs in your community. We hope that you will be interested in collaborating with us and the other entitlement jurisdictions on planning how to use the new and extra CDBG funds for a rent assistance program. We have given a lot of thought to how a rent assistance program could work effectively and efficiently to best meet the potential scale of the need across our state. See the attached chart of the issues and approaches we have considered. But we also know that some of you already allocate some of your CDBG funds for local rent assistance, and so we hope to learn from you. If you are interested in this collaborative effort, no strings attached, please contact Jason Trombley in the Office of Representative Kenny Guyer. Thank you for considering our suggestion to work together to ensure that our most valuable neighbors can remain safe and secure in their housing as our state continues to manage and recover from this public health crisis. And whether we work together or separately, please support a rent assistance program. This is signed by Representative Alyssa Kenny Guyer, Chair, House Committee on Human Services and Housing, Representative Ron Noble, Vice Chair, Representative Anna Williams, Vice Chair, Rep, Senator Shamaya Fagan, Chair, Senate Committee on Housing and Development, Senator Dallas Hurd, Vice Chair, and Sarah Gelsner, Chair of the Senate Committee on Human Services. That's it.
All right, thank you Marilyn. And I asked for the staff report, and Anne, I would presume that you wanted to do a staff report.
Yes, thank you Mayor, and, and hello everyone. Um, I'm going to make this a brief staff report, no PowerPoint presentation at all, but I do have an updated budget that was in your packet. It's the second page of the memo, I'm going to pull that up in a minute. But, um, as you know, that, thank you Jorge, Jorge pulled that up for me. Um, so there are several items on the agenda for resolutions, and I was going to talk through all of them and, and let you know that item number four is going to need to move to your May thirteenth agenda, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So, uh, this is, uh, the annual time for figuring out how we're going to spend our new allocations of CDBG dollars, including the twenty-twenty program allocation, as well as the CARES Act funding that you heard about in the letter from Representative Kenny Guyer. And, uh, in addition, we are proposing to reallocate some unspent funds or unallocated funds in both the twenty-nineteen program year and twenty-eighteen. Um, so what you will see on the screen is, um, several columns showing the different pots of money. Um, so, but the first item on the agenda is that we actually have to amend our citizen participation plan to, uh, shorten the timeframe for public comment as well as notice, as well as the notice of public hearing, which is a waiver that HUD has granted us due to the pandemic. They are trying to help us get funds out the door as quickly as possible. So they allowed a waiver to the normal thirty-day comment period and notice of public hearing to at least five days. And also to allow for virtual public hearings, since we aren't able to meet in person. So, um, the first item in resolution is just an amendment to our existing citizen participation plan in order to, uh, implement these waivers so we can try to get these funds out the door a little more quickly. And of course, with the social distancing requirements, hold public meetings differently than we normally do. Um, so then the second item is where we start talking about the, uh, budgets on your screen. So the twenty-twenty action plan, we do extensive outreach through agency consultations, uh, talking with members in the community, attending different meetings, trying to figure out what the needs are within the community. And then we also have a competitive grant process. And so you'll see that first column, right in the middle of the screen under the twenty-twenty, shows how we propose, or the Community Development Commission proposes to allocate the total award that, um, the city will be getting in twenty-twenty, which is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. So, um, the city received an application for housing rehabilitation. This is a program that has been an ongoing program to support existing homeowners with repairs that have mostly been delayed due to inability to pay for those repairs. Uh, the program is managed by Dev Northwest. They have a waiting list of ten Albany households. And in the past, uh, you've heard testimony from, uh, staff with Dev Northwest that most of the applicants are elderly, um, people on fixed incomes within the community. Anyway, they asked for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and the proposal is to fund, fully fund their application with a combination of twenty-twenty funds, as well as some twenty-eighteen carryover funds. So then, um, the next item under the twenty-twenty proposal is the city's small business grant program, which you may not be familiar with, but the city does provide a small grant up to ten thousand dollars to try to help businesses with five or fewer employees start their business. Um, not necessarily the fresh out-of-the-door businesses, but those that have been in business for about a year, because there are a lot of startup costs. And we know that the business climate now is, is very, um, in need. And, but this is a little bit different than another program I'm going to talk about. But, uh, that program has, um, had a lot of attention, so there are funds allocated to that. And then the remaining items, which are in a light blue shaded, uh, color in the chart are essentially our public service agencies. They applied for funds, and this was a competitive process. And those funds are typically limited to only fifteen percent of our allocation. So that total amounts to fifteen percent of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, um, the applicants were ranked and scored, and then the proposal for funding is, is based on that. So the twenty-twenty action plan is in your packet, um, starting with the resolution on pages, page forty-four, and it goes through page eighty-one. Um, there's a lot of information in there, and essentially that column summarizes the need, um, and how those funds would be used. Now, the, the item that we would really like your input on is the CARES package. And if you don't know, out there in the public that don't know what that stands for, it is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. And this is an additional allocation of funding, as was described in the letter that Marilyn read, uh, to cities that are entitlement jurisdictions. And I can back up and say that because Albany is over fifty thousand in population, we do receive money directly from the federal government to primarily help low and moderate income residents and neighborhoods. So, in that CARES package, the city is receiving two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty and eight hundred and four dollars in emergency assistance to help our low and moderate income residents and business owners respond, um, to impacts because of the coronavirus. So, these funds can only be used to address impacts related to, um, the COVID-19 pandemic. So, you'll see that there are some numbers that are in red on this chart. Those are slightly different numbers than the numbers that were in your packet. And that's because the Community Development Commission met Monday, and after some discussion and assessing needs in the community, they have heard, and, and I've heard it too, that our food banks and agencies that distribute food boxes could use more funding. And so they proposed to, um, take some money away that was originally suggested to be allocated towards emergency small business support, and put some of that money, twenty thousand dollars, towards emergency food boxes. So, um, you'll see that there is a hundred and five thousand allocated towards emergency housing assistance. And we are expecting there to be great need for this money. Uh, right now, there's a moratorium on eviction notices, but, um, the word is that, once that is lifted, people will have to still pay their past due rent. Now, the letter that you heard, um, provided really good information, but what they didn't say is that there is another source of funding for, uh, rental assistance, and it's called, uh, emergency solutions grants. And those are federal funds that the Community Services Consortium gets, and they are getting, uh, money through the CARES Act to, uh, support a program that is actually a rental assistance program. But those funds abbreviated ESG funds can only go to households that earn thirty percent or below our median income. So, that is our very, very lowest income residence. So those ESG funds can't help the other people and households that are low income, so the ones that are between thirty and eighty percent of median income. So, we're hoping that the CDBG funds can help those that don't qualify for the other funding. And so our proposal would be to allocate funds to Community Services Consortium, because they're already the agency that, uh, residents go to for emergency housing assistance, emergency utility assistance, et cetera. Um, and then you'll see at the bottom, there is a little bit of money set aside so that the city can, um, this would not be to pay staff, but this would help offset costs for all of this emergency supplies and possible retrofitting of city offices, for example, that maybe needed to, um, help recover from the COVID-19 and maintain social distancing, et cetera, or to purchase supplies that we could give out to agencies. But before, before I leave this row, I wanted to go back up and say that ninety thousand is proposed to go to, um, the emergency small business loan program, along with, you'll see in columns, uh, the twenty-nineteen carryover column has eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eleven, and the twenty-eighteen column has twenty-nine thousand, for a total of two hundred and eight thousand and three hundred and eleven dollars, to, um, provide another shot of funding to the loan program that the Economic Development Funds were able to create. Um, and Seth is on the line, he can answer questions. But, um, the way we're looking at the CARES funding is trying to look at, how can we help us in the long term with recovery, and then in the medium term, and then in the short term? And I think you'll see that the, um, economic, uh, the money for small business support would be helping businesses recover, and of course, maintain our local jobs and add back jobs that have been lost, so that people have income, so that they can help our economy and, and pay their rents. Um, the food boxes would be the very short-term need, and I'm not sure how much money is needed, but I did, uh, communicate with Charles DeJesus of the Salvation Army, and he is on the line, and he's going to testify. But he said that they, um, have served a hundred and eighty-five Albany families that they haven't served before the crisis, so their demand is up, and they could serve more if they had more money, but money is a big limitation. And, um, they have the capacity to increase their services and, and provide more support. And then that medium-term assistance would be to help people avoid the stress of possibly losing their housing. And we all know that housing is really expensive right now. So, um, we'd like to keep people housed during the pandemic for their safety as well. And we hope that the emergency housing assistance funds can help keep people in their homes. So that you can decide how you, you can decide to reallocate the funds however you'd like. With the CARES money, you may have heard some other needs within the community, but they do have to meet, um, a Community Development Block Grant national objective to primarily serve low and moderate income residents. So then, um, those CARES dollars are going to be added to our twenty-nineteen action plan. So that is your third item and third resolution in your packet. So that column plus our proposal for some unallocated money uh, would be all in one package, and those are the pages, um, eighty-two to eighty-nine in your packet. Um, so we have set aside funds in both twenty-nineteen and twenty-eighteen in hopes to add more affordable housing. But with the housing market, it has been challenging to find property that is available and affordable. And there are some agencies that are pursuing this, but the timing just isn't right for those funds. So because of that, we're proposing to allocate those funds to more pressing needs, which would be to serve businesses, and then our, um, waiting list for housing rehabilitation. Now, I said that item number four in your packet is going to have to be delayed, and that is because, um, the federal government first said that they were going to allow waivers so that the, uh, communities could respond to needs within the, related to COVID-19 as quickly as possible. But after preparing your packet, I found out that the waivers and the shortened time period did not apply to twenty-eighteen. So, it's helpful to see all of the funds across the spectrum and the totals allocated to the different programs. But the actual action on the twenty-eighteen funds and amendments to our five-year plan will have to wait until May thirteenth, when our thirty-day comment period, um, is up. So for your next council meeting. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Anne?
I, I, this Council Johnson, I have a question. Can you slide back up there, please?
Slide back up there, please.
Jorge? Did you, can you put the slide back up, Jorge? Okay, there you go.
So I'm looking at this column for the Emergency Small Business Support. You have $203,000 from 90,000 for CARES Act, 89,000 from 2019, 29,000, the 208. But you have Emergency Housing Assistance at 105. Why such a disparity when people right now, the small businesses are closed and they can't work? And they're stuck at home and they can't pay their bills. Why are we giving more money, twice as much money to small business than we are for Emergency Housing Assistance?
Well, that's a good question. Early on, the efforts to look at where the needs were, try to keep people employed, getting their paycheck. And the Paycheck Protection Program has rolled out and there are other federal funds trying to help businesses stay alive. Mostly because we know that the businesses employ Albany residents. And so the goal would be that it has to be an Albany business with Albany residents that we're trying to keep people, even if they're unable to work right now, we want to make sure those businesses can come back and that they're paying their employees through this pandemic or some of those employees have been furloughed and are on unemployment. But for a long-term recovery, I think it's going to be important that we allocate some funding. And it doesn't have to be the full 208,000 over those three years or three sources of funds. But I think that the jobs are going to be needed so that we can help our residents pay rent and stay housed. So can I just say one more thing? The Emergency Housing Assistance is only, you can only help residents for up to three months. And so it is a really limited timeframe. So but, but you could decide to allocate more of the CARES money towards housing assistance.
What's the, what's the timeline for this money to be received, brought into the city? When will we have control of that money?
Well, the, we have to submit a plan for how we would use the money and that is what the hearing is about tonight. And the, they are trying to have the funds available as soon as possible. I think it would be by the end of the month. So my goal is to get the plan and have it approved. And then we don't actually get a check. We have to basically get reimbursed for the expenses. But the first thing is to determine how to spend the money. And there is need across all, all of the areas and it, it isn't going to be enough money to help everybody. But we are trying to figure out how to make the best use of those dollars.
Well, my concern is that if people cannot work, they can't pay their for the next three months or whatever timeframe they're in. I did raise my hand there.
Oh, no, I know. No, go ahead, Alex. I'm just recognizing Mike.
With businesses being closed and, you know, their, their people have been furloughed or laid off or whatever you want to call it, they're unable to go to work, their mortgage or their rent's not going to stop coming. They're going to get those bills in the mail. And yes, we want to keep our small businesses open. But I would think that a person that has children or is a senior or is, has a limited income would need the money more than a small business that's going to get other federal funds from other sources. You know, and giving twice as much to small businesses when we've already chipped in a couple hundred thousand for our grants or CARE. I just think that we need to rethink that.
And Mike?
Okay, Alex, I can, let me help you understand something. Right now, the news of the street and everything else is that 40%, 40% of the businesses that were in business when this started will no longer be there at the end of this. Wait a minute, wait a minute, 40% are going to be gone. That means all of the jobs that the small businesses were providing are gone. And then those people that are having trouble with housing are going to be out of luck because they don't have a job. So and the job, the, the money for the housing only lasts for three months. Now, if we can keep a business going for the rest of the year to hire those folks, we're going to be in a lot better shape. That's my take.
I understand that, but the people with the housing assistance needs, the people with businesses will have other sources of money coming in, while the people with the housing don't. You know, so you know what I'm saying? I mean, I understand the 40% number, I get it. I watch the same news reports. But if you have a person that's going to get a company, whatever number of employees, is going to get money from different sources, have more access than the people without a job right now. I, I think that we've already given up 200,000. We have opportunity to do more through Seth. And then the federal government and state governments helping out. When people that can't pay their mortgage or the, and even the landowners or rent, the property manager, we still have to pay the mortgage. You know, we're going to pay the money directly to the landowner or the property owner. I just think that giving twice as much to small businesses, which will have other sources of opportunity to get money brought in, I, I think, just think we should be able to help people with houses first. And I do, I'm a businessman, I get it. But this CBDG money, I believe more of it should be allocated towards housing.
So do keep in mind our city program through CARE, that was a loan, so that was going to be a grant.
I understand there, I understand, but there are also.
The money will come back. Yeah. Okay, Rich?
Yeah, well, I guess in the same vein as Mike, only a little bit different. Everybody's getting a check from the federal government. Many small businesses are not getting that check. And all those people who are in need, probably 85%, 90% of them work for small business. I mean, this is, this is similar to the idea that you tax business at the other end. If business doesn't pay tax, it just collects it. Well, when you give money to business, it's going to those people. Because that's what it allows them to keep doing.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments?
Yes, Seth is peeing up.
What was that, Mike?
Seth is peeing up.
Oh, Seth, I didn't see it, so.
I've been hiding. I just thought I might be able to add something to the discussion if you've got just a moment here. I, I think everyone is echoing the, the fact that it doesn't seem like there's enough resources for everybody and that's absolutely true. Council Johnson, I just wanted to add something to maybe give you a little bit of perspective on, on the idea of putting this towards small business. I'm not advocating one way or another, but as I understand it, there isn't a rush right now to spend and allocate the CBDG dollars rather to think about a potential allocation. And there's two things that might help with this. When we looked at the Emergency Small Business Loan that was capitalized a couple of weeks ago and spent, the idea isn't to necessarily keep all businesses open, but to keep them viable. And that looks different ways for different businesses. And so I'll have Amanda to talk about this, I think, towards the end or in staff reports to let you know some of the things we learned about how the money is being spent or will be spent. That's already been given through the Emergency Loan Program. But it's really targeted at keeping businesses viable. Whether that means shuttering for a period of time or working at some minimal amount of production. Not all small businesses are closed right now, that's absolutely true. But again, there's no huge rush right at the moment. We are in the process though, we put out, many, many of you may have seen this a few days ago, a, or actually it was late last week, survey to the business community here in the Albany area, coming from not only the city, but a number of resource providers in the economic development world, like the Chamber and ADA and SBDC and these folks. And one of the intentions there is to get a sense for, in the medium, the, the medium term, so not initial shock and not long-term recovery, because we don't know when that's going to be. But in the mid, in the mid-time, how can we help folks stay viable as much as possible, as much as they can, given that we know there'll be some failures? So we anticipate to learn quite a bit from that and hoping to close that here on Friday. We'll have a little bit more understanding from their perspective on how these funds may be helpful, if at all. So I just want to share that.
Okay. All right, any other questions of Ann?
Sharon? I just wanted to make one more comment. I, I know that Charles is here from the Salvation Army, he's going to testify, but we didn't. Yeah, so the Community Development Commission didn't have any idea as to how much funding might be needed for emergency food boxes. And it is possible that 20,000 is, is too much. And so again, it would be good to get some more information through testimony tonight so that that can help inform your discussion about a, a decision and direction on these funds. That's it.
All right. Okay, so now I will call the names from the signup sheet. And first was George Matlin. George, are you on the phone? I haven't seen the video. Jorge, have you seen anything?
I don't see him on the line.
Okay, all right. Then next is Charles, and I did see Charles's video there somewhere. I got to find you again. There you are. Yes, Charles. Did you want to speak? Oh, we're not picking you up.
And Charles, $20,000 being much, that wouldn't be. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can't. You'll need to state your name and your address. Oh, nope, we're not hearing you.
All right. My name is Lieutenant Charles DeJesus of the Salvation Army, of 340.
Try that again. I can see your green light, so you've got to be on.
My name is Lieutenant Charles DeJesus of the Salvation Army.
Okay, gotcha.
My name is Lieutenant Charles DeJesus of the Shin Army. Hear me? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Charles. No, now we're not.
Can you hear me? Okay, my name is Lieutenant Charles DeJesus of the Salvation Army.
Yeah.
Lieutenant Charles DeJesus of the Salvation Army.
We just keep hearing the same thing over and over, so I'm.
345 Columbus Street, southeast.
Keep them going.
Just, just go ahead and keep talking.
All right. Okay. Just wanted to say that $20,000 is, is more than usable. The notion that it would be too much, it would, would, would not be accurate statement. To put that in perspective, when we, when we use accounting, for accounting purposes, for a gift and kind, we value a food box here at 40, $48. So at $20,000, you know, you're, you're looking on the lower end of just over 400 food boxes, which to put in that perspective, is, is less than we gave out at Christmas time for Christmas assistance. And this last year, we saw larger families than normal. At an average of about five, five per family. So when you factor in that we provide about three to four days worth of food for one to two people in one box, I can, I can admit that, that, that costs way down below 48, but $48 a box. But you know, you're looking at the, the higher end of 20 rand being about, about 600, 600 or so boxes, regardless of, of, of the organization. But with, with the Salvation Army, given everything that's going on and the, the sources of, of, of getting food, which I can, I can take care of, but I just can't give you a solid number for how much I can do each box for. I just know that we always do a good job at that, have done that for over 100 years here in, in this, in Albany. So I don't, I don't really have much to say beyond that. We're up for the job and you know, we, we do a great job over here. So if, if you need our help with this, we'd be more than happy to do it.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Are there any questions of Charles? Okay, all right. And then also those food boxes would go to somebody in need that has been impacted from the COVID-19 pandemic. So on that, just wanted to clarify that. Okay. So is there anyone else who would like to speak? If so, please turn on your camera, raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called on. Okay? Jorge, do you see anyone?
Oh, Peter.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just wanted to address Counselor Johnson's point about the loan program, small business loan program and, and it's seeming disparity for the, the Emergency Housing Assistance. And there's a, there's a fundamental difference in that the Small Business Loan Program is a loan program. So there's a decent chance that we will get that, that, those funds back and be able to use them for other priorities. As opposed to the Emergency Housing Program, which I would ask Ann to confirm is, is not a, it's not a loan program.
Right. Correct, Ann?
Correct, the, the way it's administered, those are grants. But I, I will have to say that in talking with Seth, we're trying to figure out what the greatest need is. And he's going to hear, he's hearing a lot from the community through the surveys and may have some updates. But it's possible that a portion of the CDBG funds might be in a forgivable loan, but we're not sure if we're going to be able to do that. But it's something that we are looking into.
Okay. Is there anyone else for the hearing? That was on the phone?
Well, I think Chuck was going to try to say something.
Were you, Chuck?
I was. It's not regarding the hearing. I just really wanted to give Charles a big thank you, an official thank you for the support that Salvation Army has given us throughout all of this. They've been with us from day one, helping with our Albany Recover site and have been just top-notch throughout the whole thing. So thank you, Charles.
Well, thank you, Chuck, and yes, thank you, Charles. So, so much for all you do for our community. Thank you. Anyone else then on this public hearing? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 8:43 PM. And any other questions, counsel, that you have on what Ann had proposed? And this was the, actually, Ann, you said item number four is pulled off. So it would be a resolution on pages 37, 44, and 82, correct, Ann? Okay, all right. So counsel, questions or what would you like to do with these items?
I have, can we approve the one through three all at once?
Yes, I think if you, if you mention all three resolutions on pages 37, 44, and 82, we can.
Well, I'd move to approve all three of those resolutions then.
Okay. All right, who was the second?
Rich.
Rich, okay. Any discussion?
Sharon, I do want to, Sharon, can I just say something? The attachment to the second resolution on, sorry, the third resolution on page 82, I would just need to update that with the numbers that were on your screen. I've already got a draft of that done, but I would just need to modify some numbers because the version that you received in your packet was received before the Community Development Commission discussed it and their recommendation was to move some money out of the Economic Development Small Business Program to food boxes, which you saw on the screen with the red, with the red numbers. So just know that the attachment there will be modified to reflect the numbers that were on your screen if you vote to approve that resolution.
Gotcha. Okay, counsel, all clear on that?
The second is okay with that.
Okay, all right. And Bill, was that a question you had or just a thumbs up? Okay. All right, not seeing anybody else with any questions. And the motion is to approve all three resolutions. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, thank you, Ann. Thank you, Charles, also for attending. Okay, that takes care of our public. Okay, that takes care of our public hearings. Item six is adoption of resolutions, but Peter, you wanted to have a comment on this.
Yes, we had to pull item 6A and 6B from the agenda for this evening just because of concerns about late breaking concerns due to coronavirus and funding. So you may see that come back to you. But so it probably will change somewhat, but we'll bring them back if we can.
Okay, all right, counsel, so that means next item is award of a contract. This is for the Riverfront Lift Station in Forest Main. And Stacy, I think you're on-
Chris Circluski is available to talk.
Chris will, okay, Chris? He needs to be unmuted.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Chris. Now we got a green light.
All right. I forgot my echo here. Try again. Hello?
Yep, we got you.
Okay, this is, this contract is the second phase.
Jorge, I think if you mute everybody else, we might get rid of the echo.
Yeah, I think that Chris came in two different lines, so I'm just trying to figure out which one is the real one so I can mute the other one. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, let me try that now. I have my phone muted.
Yeah, let's go ahead and unmute your- that one. And I'm gonna mute the other one. Let me find the other one. Where were you on the other one here? Give it a try, Chris, now.
Testing, testing?
Yep.
All right, there we go. Much better. This project is the second phase of the Riverfront, Riverfront Wet Weather Lift Station in Forest Main. That's going on, the first phase is going on right now down along Water Avenue, if you may have seen. The second phase includes basically installing cured-in-place pipe on the entire length of the existing Riverfront Interceptor sewer main, all the way from that wet weather lift station, all the way to the wastewater or the water reclamation facility. The, we have three bidders on the project. The low bidder was in Situform Technologies for just over $1.6 million. And that was for, we had, that was on Schedule B. We had bid it with two schedules because our consultant on the project had some concerns about what the, the cost would be, given the, the bidding climate. Evidently, this is an extremely busy year for cured-in-place pipe installation, for some reason. And we know of at least two major contractors that did not, were not going to bid the job because they were too busy. As it turns out, the prices came in really good, which is a lot closer to the original estimates that we had. So that's excellent news. And we've worked with Situform before. They're a, they're a major company in North America that does this kind of work. And basically, this is all part of the, the DEQ loan that the city received to address overflows into the sewer overflows into the Valerian River. That we've been looking at ways to solve for many years. This is now, this is the culmination of that effort. And the second phase is the final part of that project. If there's any questions, I can answer those.
Okay, any, any questions of Chris? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay, staff have anything else? All right, with that, counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, I heard Mike, and then, and Rick? Any discussion? Was that a yes for discussion, Rich, or?
No.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next is adoption of the consent calendar. This is A, B, and C, which is on your third page. There isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, counsel, we went through our agenda items. And next is business from the council. And I'll start from the top of the screen. And Alex, you're on the-
I need to get out of my house. Actually, nothing. I've just seen an incredible amount of kindness through, throughout the city. I'm really impressed with the way people responding to each other. The social distancing has been a challenge for a lot of people, but I've been really impressed by just the random acts of kindness I've seen all around town. So I think Albany's gonna be okay. So I'm pretty excited about being here. I've been here 25 years and I couldn't have picked a better place to live. So that's all I got.
Isn't that great? I know, it's wonderful to hear that, so thank you. Okay, next is Rich. Yep.
I have three more days to work.
Wow.
Then I'm tired, tired and re-re-retired.
Retired. Good for you.
It's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week.
Oh my gosh.
Martin Luther King said, "Free at last, free at last." Yeah, right.
Congratulations. Hey, did you ever check out the old water tower? The Burkhart Water Tower?
Yes, I did. Yeah.
You never said anything about it. What'd you think about it?
Well, there is a thought process in my head about that. I'm not going to discuss it in public.
Now, it is probably the biggest building in Albany.
Well, you know, you could make it look a lot better without a lot of asphalt. You can take a stucco, that's not very far from concrete. And the accoutrements that you add to it and subtract from it would have a whole lot to do with it. You know, you could, you could turn that into a little mini white house. Think about it, just a little bit of concrete on the outside and a portico in front. I don't know why you, yeah, the Oval Office would be strange, but you know.
I think-
It's still in my head.
All those boats. I think it'd be fun for you. Yeah.
Yeah. I think it'd be more fun for you to do all that stuff.
There's probably too many rats in that thing.
Well, it does have 200,000 gallons of Albany-owned water.
Yeah.
In there since 1980, whatever.
Yeah. Did you have any else?
Next it.
All right, okay, Bessie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Dick?
Nothing, thank you.
And Mike?
Yes, I would request that somebody talk to the operators of the vehicles that got a City of Albany sticker all over the side of them to take their foot out of the carburetor when they're driving down the road. It doesn't set a very good example for the people. And if they were to obey the speed limit on the roads, I would be much happier. It kind of frustrates me if I would have had time today. I probably would have went and chased one individual down and found out where he was going and had a, and had a talk to him, but I didn't. I didn't have the time. So that's, that's what I have.
Yeah, okay, all right. Peter will probably be talking to you to find out kind of which description vehicle, so. Oh yeah, so. And Bill?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing, okay, and I didn't have anything this evening. We do still have executive session, remember, so with that, and Peter?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a couple of seconds here. In conversations with Jeff Blaine today, you know, we were talking about how this time of year is normally when you would see proposals for inflationary increases in development charges. Given the climate, though, that may be something that counsel might like to put a strategic pause on. But I put that out there for you and I'd invite you to let me know how you feel about that. We can bring that up later. As you may have seen, we're working on plans to resume normal operations in stages. The governor's framework for reopening Oregon is out and we'll be using that in any, any additional guidance that the governor's office comes out with to, to base our own plans for resuming normal operations. Let's see, Seth, I would ask Seth to perhaps comment on anything else about the small business emergency loan program that he'd like to, to mention. We briefly talked about that in connection, but he may have some numbers to further brief you on. And then, Mayor, after he's done, I've got one or two more things.
Okay, all right, Seth?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I thought you guys would find it interesting to know a little bit about the distribution and uses of the emergency loan fund that has been fully exhausted. So it was open for four or five days and within a week, the money, the applications have been processed and the money had been distributed to 15 different businesses, the majority of which asked for the, for about $15,000 in the loan. Interestingly, the report that I got back from Community Lending Works, who's administered this loan program, was that the applicants were very thoughtful about how to use this money towards keeping their business viable and in operation as much as possible, rather than just shuttering the doors. So uses were all across the board, between using it for leases and rent payments, as well as utilities, some long-term debt that they may have had, net term agreements, vehicle maintenance, fuel, raw materials, packaging, all sorts of things to do with essentially accounts payable and keeping their business viable as much as possible, even at a, at a limited, a limited production rate. So that was good. I would say, just to think about next steps and probably to dovetail on the conversation of the use of CDBG dollars a little bit, we're in a really funky place right now. When our emergency loan program launched, people were fairly optimistic about federal assistance coming through to save the day. What was very disheartening is, whatever it was by Monday or Tuesday last week, the original round of idle loans and PPP were all exhausted. And I know many folks here were waiting in line, had applications in, and did not get the money. We're hopeful that many more get touched and benefited by this next round that's coming through here. But at any rate, I think it would be prudent to keep the powder dry, so to speak, and we're certainly a ways away from recovery, but any further assistance, whether in loans, grants, forgivable loans, I think it'd be worthwhile waiting on a little while to kind of see where we're at in the next weeks and potentially a month, because it's really unclear on how much federal assistance will be available and how useful it'll be depending on when we emerge from this, this shutdown. And just to add that in, I just remind you, like I mentioned earlier, that we do have the emergency assist, Economic Development Assistance Survey out. Tell your friends and business owners who chat with you, it's listed on our website. And I know as of this week that the chamber sent out the same link to that survey, the ADA, the ADA, SBDC sent it out, AMDEC has. So we're trying to get as much uptake and participation in that as possible so we can really try to tailor our services and responses as a collective economic development ecosystem here as much as possible. So happy to answer any questions if they exist.
Okay, questions of Seth? All right, don't see anything. Thank you, Seth.
Welcome.
Thanks, Seth. And then the last thing, Mayor, is that, just to remind you all that ballots for our upcoming election will be delivered to the post office on April 29th. And the last thing is that the Fire Department reports that they transported their first COVID-19 patient this last weekend. Everything was done according to procedure and all was well, although I have no word on the patient themselves. That's all I have, Mayor.
Can you tell us where the patient came from?
I cannot, I don't have that information, Dan.
Thank you.
Shane might be able to. I don't know if he, if he has it.
I think what it's probably safe to say is, without violating any confidentiality, it did come from a private residence.
Well, I think that's good news, yeah. Well, if anything of this kind can be good news, yes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other staff have anything this evening?
Mayor, I'm sorry to interject here. I just want to say, if I didn't make it clear earlier, the City of Albany and the loan program that you chose to stand up has been a real positive thing statewide and lots of communities have looked towards what, what we've done so far. And I just want to thank you again on behalf of the recipients and others who would have liked to have received that money. It's been a really, a great thing and a great risk to have taken. Hopefully, it really pays dividends, so I just want to make that clear. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Seth. All right, okay, nothing else for regular meeting here? Okay, all right. The City Council will now meet in an executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations pursuant to ORS 192.6602D. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the go-to meeting at this time. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and the go-to meeting will be reopened to the public. Your screen will display the message, waiting for City of Albany to unlock the meeting. Keep your screen on. When the council returns to open session, we will unlock the meeting and you will automatically rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media specifically directed not to report any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in this executive session. I now recess executive session at 9:03 PM. Okay? Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it just said that it's been recorded. Okay, so now with that, I'll reconvene the regular session at 9:18 PM. And Council, you had two items that you were going to need to take action on. The first one then would be, Dinette, did you want to state what that action's going to be?
You will be approving a two-year contract from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2022 for the Police Association's collective bargaining agreement.
I would move to approve.
I second.
Okay, I heard Bessie and I heard two seconds, Alex, I think it was, and.
Yes, and Rich, that's fine, whatever.
Okay. All right, any, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. And then there's another item. And did you want to say anything for that, Peter?
I would just say that I would ask the council to approve a temporary reduction in my salary of 10% until December 31st of this year in recognition of the crisis in which we find ourselves.
Move to approve.
I second.
All right, I think I heard, was it Rich, Mike?
Yep.
Made the motion?
Heard both of us.
It was both, it was both of us at the same time.
It was.
Nice second.
Okay, all right. And this would be for 10% reduction in Peter's salary till the end of December 31st, 2020. And any discussion?
Only that Peter came to us and asked me for this. We did not ask him to do that. We, you know, and I louted for it.
Well, can I say something on that? It showed, it shows leadership. And I appreciate that. Shows a lot of leadership.
And character.
They're here.
They're there. Yeah.
You can't be a leader without character.
Yeah. Okay, all right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right. The screen just kind of shifted on me, so now I lost where you were at, Peter. Oh, there you are, now you're down on the bottom. Is that happening to everybody else? Or is it never, you know, people are, as somebody leaves, it kind of shifts everybody? Okay, is there anything else for the meeting tonight, Council? Okay, and so our next meeting would be May 13th, and we have one on May 27. And with that, we're adjourned and everyone drive safely going home.